All right, it's seven o'clock. So let's call this meeting of the Mounary Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll start with the minutes in our packet. We're minutes from both the last two regular meetings, both November 19 and December 19. We deferred acceptance of the November 19 meetings because we didn't, we were kind of light in our attendance last time.
I just have some minor typo-type corrections.
Okay.
On the first page, under number four, the second sentence, it should be water capacity rather than water compactly, I believe.
Okay, do you have that written or whatever we can get to Annalise? Okay, cool.
The other, who's back on page four? The first paragraph, it just, um, second sentence. Gary, do you want to give your seat then?
I certainly could.
We can wait. It settles, there's nothing reason to keep going. What was the change Diane? I was gonna wait till Leslie said. Oh, okay.
Okay, well, hanging out for at least the first part. Yeah, okay. Careful where areas. Come on up.
Hi Leslie, how are you dear? Wow. Everybody's here.
It's all right.
Mm-hmm.
Abstaining.
It's flu season even.
Okay.
Hello, usually it's me running in late.
All right.
So we're just going over the November meeting minutes. Okay, so on page four, the first paragraph, um, second sentence in that paragraph, it just should be within is one word rather than with an in, and then the first two, insert years. It's this sentence here where it reads after, "Purchase the home on Ellis Road, comma, within" should be one word, the first two, and then insert years of living in the home.
Right, right, right. Yeah, right, okay. Okay, so you got those marked, okay.
I just want to make a note in that next section about the proposed building is 8,000 square feet because this same property is referenced in the next set of minutes and it's a different square footage. So we'll come back to that in a second when we go to the next set. Oh, good, you're right, I missed that.
And you got that within the first two something?
Yeah. What is the correct square footage for?
Well, we'll, because there, this one was when?
Eighty-eight ninety-six, I think.
Well, and that would, eighty-six ninety-six is in the next set of minutes, but what I want to know is what the, because they went to the Board of Appeals, so what was actually approved? Was it the eight thousand or was it the eighty-six ninety-six?
The Board of Appeals had a rough concept, like conceptual drawing. What was approved by this body would have been in December.
We made a recommendation to the Board of Appeals and then the Board of Appeals made an approval on this.
Right, but you, as the planning body, you firm up that final, that site plan. The Board of Appeals, when that conceptual drawing, it was before the hard engineering and everything went through. So I think that they had to like, they expanded just very moderately.
Okay, so the concept, I just want to make sure that our numbers are all correct is all.
Yeah, so in.
So when we did the concept plan, is the eighty-six ninety-six correct? That's what's on the second set of minutes?
When, in December, the eighty-six ninety-six, um, would have, on December 17th, would have reflected the final plan that they submitted by this body.
And that has no bearing on whatever the Board of Appeals?
Not for that particular special exception.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Because it's not just when a pupil counts so much.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and those were my only issues on that particular.
All right, so let's hand this over. Okay, to them.
Oh, um.
Is there a motion to approve the November?
Well, can we also add, there is one thing, I don't know if that one needed it or not. There was an inconsistency just because when we say somebody sustained or said nay, in this document we're saying who that person is and that one we did not. And can we be consistent about if there's like one person saying nay or somebody sustaining or abstaining, by sustaining, abstaining, what would be? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the word that was here, one sustained, so that would be different.
Have you set a precedent in the past, is there a?
I don't remember, I believe we usually do.
Diane's absolutely correct.
Okay.
It should be signified.
All right.
So can we add that to that, to the November minutes?
Is that in the notes?
Yes.
It is, okay, good, then let's add it. All right, December minutes?
Did you want a motion for them?
We can do them both at the same time, we can do them separate. Is there a motion to accept the November minutes?
I think a motion to accept the November nineteen eight thousand.
Is there a second? All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, and it's unanimous. December.
Bottom of that first page, the word recommendations, it's just a typo, there's a space between recommendation and the S.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then on the last. Under citizen comments? Okay, I had on page three.
Before we, before we get to three, on page two, lot thirty-five T A B P, last paragraph, motion, is that a motion to, is it accept or approve the staff recommendation?
Which one are you looking at?
The motion was to accept the staff recommendation to approve the concept plan? It's just a, it's rhetoric. Otherwise you got to prove or proof.
So it would be motion to approve the concept plan? Take out the staff recommendation to?
All right, that's better. To approve the concept plan, okay.
Remove the staff recommendation to approve.
All right.
I didn't even catch that.
Cool.
And then, okay, then I have on page three, um, same thing, the first motion, it says motion, motioned to denied. Oh, you're right, by. And then one sustained, it should be abstained, I believe.
Right, right, one abstention or one abstained, uh-huh.
And that's all I personally.
Okay.
If you go back to the first page, number three.
Okay.
Under citizen comments, it says reopening of Rising Ridge Road. I assume that's supposed to be where, it says where the dead end?
Oh, okay, you're right. But where instead of where?
Right. Got the other one?
I spell where? Now I'm going to go to the dead end.
Where, okay, all right, okay.
Does she want mine or yours, did you write? You wrote?
I got it.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept the December minutes with the changes identified?
Motion to accept them with those changes.
Is there a second? All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it passes. Okay, let's move on to citizen comments and we have a request from Councilman Everidge to allow him to speak because he's got another meeting that he needs to get to. So councilman?
Yeah, so I guess Bill, your request came this evening to talk a little bit about a preview of the briefing that Water to give to council on Tuesday.
Okay.
And then, you know, answer any questions anybody has. So what we've been driving towards, of course, in a series of meetings over the last two, three months, is trying to, is reevaluating the current water supply. Trying to rationalize our approach, rationalize an approach to see if in fact we have more water available. That, you know, Water to will make its recommendation to council on Tuesday, next Tuesday, no, next Monday or weekday today. So at that time I'll be giving the council a brief thing, going, basically starting with the history, how we got to where we are, the way we got into a consent agreement. Also discuss what Water to's recommendation is, the rationale behind the recommendation, and then of course for future action. The really important things that come out of this, at least for future action, one, the council at some point in their future is going to need to set that number. They either go with Water to's recommendation, they modify it, they, they don't accept it, they go some path. The other, and that will provide, result, that will provide planning the number you need for the W R E, which takes you to the master growth element, which takes us to the master plan. I'll note one thing about the recommendation, it will not include Lizer Harrison, of course, because that's just a long-term solution, it's not a short-term solution. Also with the plan to move forward is, and I know that's already been a point of discussion here, is the ability for planning to allocate water. So let's say, for example, the council decides that we should readjust our water. Number, we have, for example, determined that we probably have about sixty-one thousand gallons per release. I'm not saying that's not going to be the number, but let's just say, for example, we determine, right now we show a deficit, let's say to council, we determine we have sixty-one thousand gallons per release, how do we allocate that? I think the desire of most in the community and commissioners I've heard is we'd like to allocate any new water sources against some of the planned drafts and the master plan, downtown redevelopment, Mid Center Street redevelopment. So I think one of the key points of my briefing will be for planning to work on, you know, recommend to council legislation to allow planning to legally allocate water resources that are available. That's kind of the highlight of where we're going. Currently, the final briefing I'm putting together is still in draft format, incorporating comments from planning, from water, incorporating now comments from staff, and, you know, I encourage everybody to be at the council meeting a week from today. After I give the briefing, feel free to ask questions. And if anything else I can answer.
Okay, three comments. First of all, we really appreciate you carrying this ball down the field and focusing attention on it. I would be remiss if I didn't say though that upwards of two years ago, our own Gary Nelson first raised his hand to say, I think this is going to be a significant issue and a resource that we need a lot more discussion and consideration of, and that's in part brought us.
And truth be told, I began this journey.
Yeah.
Because of Gary.
Truth be told, I began this journey directly with Gary, that's how I started.
And then the other thing that we want to be sure is publicly recognized is how appreciative we are for the efficient responsiveness of Dick Swanson and the Water and Sewer Commission for jumping on this and, and working through it. So thank you very, very much for all of that. Any questions or any comments for councilman?
Chris, do you think the council will look at your numbers and just be critical of them or accepting of them? And I assume, knowing you as I do, that a lot of work was put into this area. Numbers are clearly, pardon the fact, we have.
You missed our work session where there's a water and sewer recommendation and they have basically three options on it. The second option is very close to those numbers. Remarkably close to those numbers, but. Option four is what, after this whole, you got available? Yes. Yeah, I mean, Tony, I'm not sure how, I think it's too early to tell how the council's going to react to the number, but, you know, as Gary, as Gary just said, I mean, the number that we're likely recommending is going to be along the lines of what's been out there before. My concern, of course, the overriding concern, I think of anybody touching this number, I'll use the vernacular, if we screw this up, we're going to put ourselves in a really bad position. Meaning, I mean, town staff has spent many years getting us out from a consent agreement. How did we get to the consent agreement? We got to the consent agreement because we allocated water for development that wasn't guaranteed, that simply didn't happen. So, um, that's a very big element to this entire story. So we have to be conservative, yet we don't want to be so conservative that we're choking off economic development. So, I mean, I can't answer your question as to how the council's going to react, but I think the number we put forth has an awful lot of thought behind it and isn't significantly different than what's been previously out there.
And just to clarify, we've not actually formally received a notification that we're out from under the consent agreement.
I think Marley's in the back of the room, that's correct, but as I understand, it's really a matter of.
Maybe it's just a formality.
Yes.
Good.
So.
Good.
I mean, the other factor that, I mean, I think it's really, really important, and I've said this before to the press, to everybody else, it's really important to get citizens' input out there. Because a relatively small group of people elected at a point are going to help determine a number that's going to set the path, it's going to set the characteristics of the town for the foreseeable future, five, ten, twenty years. This one's pretty critical, as you guys know, again, you can't complete the work until you get a number, a hard number to work with. Well, Chris, I just point out that there actually is, and I'm not saying there shouldn't be more, but there is a fair amount of citizen input as to the type of development that they'd like to see. My concern is, since we got two councilmen here tonight, that acting too fast could take away.
I know, Bill already said I don't count tonight, so I'm just not here anymore.
The Rodney Dangerfield of.
Do you want to sit here now?
Scott, you count to us, absolutely.
Whatever, go ahead.
My concern is that by acting too fast, it would take away our flexibility to be able to allocate as many of the townspeople have already expressed in things like the survey about downtown development and stuff. It would take away, because our existing regulations pretty much state that we're on a first come, first served basis in terms of what the existing water is. And so if they act before we can put something into place that quickly, that could, I think, be very harmful to the kind of growth that we do want to see. Right, so on the, again, a preview of the briefing, I'm not suggesting or recommending at all to the council next meeting that you choose a number. Rather, I'm suggesting to the council that, which again, there's a planning, suggesting to the council that they begin to consider the rationale behind the number. However, we have to wait until legislation's in place to allow planning to serve. So that's the, you know, we've talked about the support, as the chairman of the planning commission to essentially drop what you're doing and get to work on legislation.
And I did, we've done a draft.
Right.
We've done a draft and it's, and we'll have more discussion tonight, but basically it's, it's going to be a request to council for more consideration, more latitude, you know, given the precious, you know, current resource we have.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, one of the other suggestions, again, I'm taking up a little more time there, sensitive, one of the other suggestions, and the thing for the water commission, and, okay, now that the water commission's made its recommendation, the other suggestion, request for the water commission, is, okay, now reevaluate again the W R E, what other available sources do we have for water, what's the availability of that? I mean, on the face of it, I don't see any additional sources of water that I think are economically viable, other than carousel shear. And again, that's pretty far enough, so, again, that's just, you know, preliminary information.
Okay, yes?
Councilman King?
Councilman King?
I think this, this council is not known for its expedience in getting things done, so I don't think anything's going to happen right away.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're.
Wait, I dispute. I'll quickly dispute that.
You're part of the new wave, don't sell yourself short.
I don't, I don't think we're going to jump ahead of anything, you know. I think all of us understand the importance of these numbers and these decisions. That's number one. And number two, as far as the number goes, I, we're just looking for a number that everybody at this table can agree on, and also that we can agree on. We're looking for a number that's, that's a real number instead of just a number that we've been using for the last ten years. So I, I think that's where the council is on this, I, that's where I am personally on this. So.
Yeah, I, I, I echo.
Sure, sure, I think, you know, we fully expect it'll be a prudent discussion and.
Don't watch, please, sir.
Yeah. No, I think we've all gained a lot of perspective in this discussion. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment, any other citizen comment from our attendees tonight? All right then, if there being, no one stepping up to the podium, we'll move ahead with our agenda. Site plan, subdivision, permit review. And the first is, Heather, is BGE Home, Constellation Energy signage request?
Yes, sir. The applicant is BG, BGE Home, a constellation company, and they're operating out of twenty-seven oh one Backacre Circle, and the zoning of that property is in the industrial district. The applicant has submitted a sign application for review and approval on behalf of BGE Home located at twenty-seven oh one Backacre Circle in the Twin Arch Business Park. The applicant seeks approval to install non-illuminated channel logo to be flush mounted to the building front as depicted in the photo attached to this report. The total, the total sign area will measure forty-three point four, forty, point four seven square feet. The signage will replace the existing signage for Van Sant Incorporated and the corresponding logo. The three existing sets of channel lettering for plumbing, heating, and cooling measuring a total of fifty-two square feet will remain. The frontage of the building measures a hundred linear feet. Town code one twelve dash eleven B one, which states the total area for all attached signs per use or business on the premise shall not exceed one square foot of building sign per building front foot per premise, therefore allowing a maximum of a hundred square feet of signage. With the combined, with the combined existing and proposed signage, a total of ninety-five point four seven square feet of wall-mounted signage would be installed. The proposal therefore meets the town code regulation for what, for the amount of wall-mounted signage permitted. The building material and overall sign design is compatible with the town's vision for signage. Staff therefore recommends approval of the sign permit application for BGE Home, a constellation company with the design, building material, and dimensions proposed. And I am uncertain, I don't believe we have a representative, they, it was, the weather was a factor. But essentially Van Sant Plumbing and Heating sold the company to BGE Home, same business model, just a different company. I was pleased that it wasn't illuminated letters, so that is one of the main bases for.
What's the similarity or difference with the way Van Sant had, with its signage on the building?
It was the Van Sant logo.
I mean, that's it?
I think there was.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it, okay.
Yeah, that's a little picture above.
Make a motion to approve as proposed?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the permit application. Any further discussion? You ready for the question? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it passes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Then that takes us to Happy Dog Grooming Salon.
Yes, firstly, we'd like to welcome Happy Dog Grooming Salon into the town. The site location is two oh three East Ridgeville Boulevard. The zoning of the property is C C or Community Commercial, and it is a dog grooming salon, of course. The applicant is a new business in town and will be operating their dog grooming business at two oh three East Ridgeville Boulevard. They are seeking approval for their business signage. There are existing box lit cabinet signs mounted on the existing structure that were previously used to advertise the hair salon. The applicant seeks to replace the panels of the box lit signs on both the front and rear of the building with the business name and logo for Happy Dog Grooming Salon. The rectangular placement, replacement panel in the front of the building will measure one foot in height by eight feet wide or eight square feet. The replacement panel on the rear of the building will also total eight square feet, but will be a square panel and will measure two foot high by four feet wide. In addition, two sign panels are proposed to be replaced with a matching design on the existing pole-mounted sign located in the front yard area of the building. The total square footage of the wall-mounted replacement panel signage is sixteen square feet. Town code one twelve dash eleven B one states that the total area for all attached signs per use or business on the premise shall not exceed one square foot of sign per building front per premise. According to the site plan, the building frontage measures twenty-five feet, therefore twenty-five square feet of signage is allowed. Staff recommends approval of the sign permit application with the design and building material as proposed. And, there we go, thank you. It's like we have some more pictures. And obviously cabinet signs are not our preferred sign design, but the, the planning commission has allowed the refacing of those signs. And the topography of the building is such that street level, the business is actually on that first level, but when you're looking from the Walmart parking lot, it's actually up top. So the, the hair salon had a sign up at the top as well. So those were the, the main reasons for approving the replacement of more than one sign.
Okay. All right. We have representatives here tonight?
We do, we have the owner and operators here.
Logo.
Yeah, very nice. Are there any other grooming salons or establishments?
A zillion around here.
Yes.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of pets, so.
Cats are represented.
Cool.
Cats don't need grooming, it's off.
They love water.
All right, this looks pretty straightforward. I move that we approve the permit and the request. Is there a second? All right, all in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it's unanimous. Very good.
Good luck to you.
Absolutely. I especially like the, the rendering that says Happy Dog Full Service Salon, I especially like that one.
Jealous, Lynn.
Okay, site plans. Verizon Wireless Communications Equipment on the, on the town water towers?
Yes. Hold on.
Moving quickly.
It's okay, that's all right. This is the, we, this is a simple site plan. Those of you who have been on the commission recall the BGE antennas and communication equipment from perhaps a year or so ago. The applicant is Verizon Wireless, the engineer for the project is Morris Ritchie and Associates. They're operating out of twelve twenty East Joppa Road in Towson, Maryland. The site location is the town of Mounary Municipal Water Tank, and the address, my apologies, is actually five twenty-two North Main Street, and that's by the school and the firehouse and the locker plant. The zoning of the property is RE Residential Existing. The existing use is a municipal water tank and existing telecommunications compound. The proposed use is telecommunications equipment shelter and equipment pad. The total area of the. The total area of the subject site is 1.2 acres. The applicant proposes to construct a fourteen-foot by seventeen-foot equipment shelter on a concrete foundation and a proposed four-foot by seven-foot concrete generator pad. A total of fifteen proposed, mm, sorry about that, Verizon antennas will be installed on the water tank. The antennas will be before, be between four feet and eight feet tall. The total lot size, the total lot size of the municipal water tank area is shown as 1.2 acres. The telecommunications additions will be no more than 266 square feet of ground disturbance. This project was exempt from a full environmental review because the ground disturbance is less than the threshold of 5,000 square feet, which would trigger the required environmental compliance. The site is accessed off of Cottonwood Avenue.
It's actually accessed. There is no access off of Cottonwood.
Oh.
And your, your diagram does show.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, thank you.
And, and the 266 is a combination of the, uh, equipment shelter outline and the generator pad.
And the generator. And, um, just to, if anybody's concerned that the BGE and the Verizon combined would be over the 5,000, the BGE was only 166. So, we're still well under that. Okay, the site is accessed off of Main, thank you, Ms. Diane. There is an existing driveway access to the municipal water, water tank. A wired fencing exists and encloses the entire 1.2 acre site of the municipal water tank. There is sufficient, sufficient vegetation that buffers the surrounding residential lots from this site. The telecommunications station will be unmanned and will not require additional parking spaces. No signage is proposed for the site and no additional lighting is proposed. This project will not require the utilization of water and sewer services. The adjoining property owner has been notified of the proposed additions to the water tower, and that was, um, Ms. Diane brought up at the BGE site plan that we should, um, reach out to the locker plant just to let them know, and we have done that.
They own the land, correct?
No, the town, Barney, the town owns the land.
The town owns that portion of the land.
Okay, but it has to be accessed using, there's permission to access by the.
We have to use that through their land, yes.
So we have notified them, that's just something we learned that we didn't do for BGE, so.
Well, actually, when we had talked about that, we had talked about notifying all the adjacent property owners. Excuse me.
Okay. And we can.
People that backed up to it as well, because there's a lot of houses that back up to it, and that seems to keep growing.
Okay, well, we can do that as well, I thought it was, I'm sorry, I thought it was only.
No, that's okay, that was something I was gonna bring up in a minute, so you can keep going.
Staff recommends approval of a simple site plan to allow the telecommunications additions, provided that all commission and planning staff comments are addressed. And I have a friend Harold here, where's, hi Harold. He is from Verizon, and Barney can answer any specific questions as to the project as well.
So what did we approve last year? I thought we approved some sort of a shed at that time as well.
There were two relatively similar in size cabinets for BGE. It was a generator pad, I believe it was five by seven, and then it was like a fifteen by seventeen, um, equipment shelter.
Which I don't know that that was ever, that, I don't think they ever built it.
Barney?
Did they complete that?
Yeah, that's done.
It is done, okay, I'm sorry. All right, so this would be a second.
For Verizon.
There's, and the one that's there was.
BGE.
And will Verizon own that now?
No, they're, they're leasing, um, space on our site. So it'll be BGE, equipment will remain, and then we're having Verizon.
Okay, because we did talk at that time, I remember, our concern of, of putting more and more at that one little site, and it does back up to quite a few homes, and, um, though I guess I'm just a little concerned with continuing to add more and more to that little site.
One thing that staff has talked about was adding, like landscaping, not, not landscaping so much to, um, cause an unsafe area, but some additional plantings, perhaps in conjunction with like a reforestation project or even a beautification project, just to somehow buffer that, that area.
If, if the owned, landowner, the locker would be amenable to that, but not at his expense by any means.
No, I think that would be on the, the town's property, and it would, you know, be, yeah.
Okay, so there is a lease agreement that BG or Verizon has with the town?
The lease agreement is up for council consideration on February 4th.
All right, so then the application of the communications equipment, is it for Verizon purposes? Is there a public utilization or a benefit to the town, or is it purely for private application for cash?
How, and, and this is typical, um, the next tell did it on the water tank out by the Food Lion Shopping Center. It, it's basically a lease rent option.
I just, I guess, I'm just concerned with the size, fourteen by seventeen is kind of large, and this is a small lot, and it's, fourteen by seventeen is, I don't know, with the other shed that's already there and there's, I don't know, I'm concerned that it's kind of large for the space. Seems like we're adding a lot to that tiny little area.
Yeah, that's.
It's to scale?
It's scale, as noted.
It's the scale, it's, it's not large.
It's not showing the old shed.
I think Barney, um, would have some comments.
The BGE shed is right here.
They, they do not, it's pending, so you.
Is there a square footage limit to a situation like this?
It's, my concern is these homes right here and whether they have an issue with it or not.
The county engineer is raising his hand.
I'm just saying, you know, it's not a shelter, it's just a, a equipment pad, so it'll have equipment that's going on.
It's not like a big fourteen by seventeen foot shed, okay. Does this equipment make any added noise?
Well, the, there is a backup generator, which will go right here, uh, which is required by FCC laws. It's one of the post Katrina requirements from FCC that all carriers have to have backup.
Even if power outage?
In, in case of a extended or prolonged power outage, so.
Does that make noise on a regular?
No, it, it does periodic tests, I think twice a day, and then other than that, it doesn't operate unless main power is cut.
And the reason I ask again is just because when we talked about this last year with the other shed, there was a noise concern as well, and that's kind of why we had said that we wanted to make sure that the homeowners that are right there have, are aware and are okay with it, because, I mean, it's just more noise in their backyard. I think they should be, have a chance to voice their opinion, if they have one, maybe they don't, I don't know, but it's right in their backyard.
Is there a decibel rating that you project for this?
I have to check, I don't have the generator specs with me right now, but it's a, it's a, Verizon uses a standard model, and I can certainly get that information. And we have, um, up in the city of Frederick, we did an installation at one of their parks, and there were some houses directly across the street, so we did have to look into it at that time just to make sure there was no issues with creating undue noise for the nearby residences.
I think if it's gonna be tested twice a day, that's certainly a consideration, I'm sure it's not, I wouldn't want to look into it sometimes twice a day.
Yeah, I think we can, um, control, you know, obviously the times when it does this auto testing. I don't think it's.
Hard up and run.
I want to say it's nine or 10 o'clock in the morning that it does the one test, and then, um, in the evening, like six or seven o'clock, but I'd have to, I'd have to really check with our operations managers and see how exactly they have them set up.
I'm just mostly, the house is right here on Main Street, right there.
Is there, Heather, is there a, a sound ordinance or a decibel level?
We do have the, um, the noise ordinance. I cannot recite the, the decibel level, it's by Co, it's the standards of Comar, and, you know, you can't exceed so many decibels, like during daytime defined and nighttime defined hours. I, I could not.
Think that was 65 or 67?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Are there, um, so there are in that noise line, is there a time? Sounds like there are ti, certain times in the day where noise is restricted.
Yes, it's, it's typically, um.
At 10:00 P.M.?
After 10:00 P.M., um, but at any given time, it can't exceed, it, it can't be excruciatingly.
All the generator tests installed? I think it's about a minute or two.
Do something like.
Yeah, I mean, we can, in, in certain very confined areas like Alexandria, DC, where there's not a lot of options for us, there are muffler or acoustic caps that they can put on those to make sure that it keeps the noise from becoming a nuisance to neighboring property owners, so.
So it's standard protocol that you would check to see what the local ordinance is and make sure you're operating within it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Heather, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
No, yeah, I'm sorry. You said you've notified the neighbor.
The, the locker plant, which.
Uh, two questions, one is have the response from them?
Uh-huh, Barney actually spoke directly.
Can you tell us what the response was?
He didn't have any problem with it.
Okay, the other question is, do you, does easement language, does that allow other users access that driveway? Is it restrictive just to the town, or is there, I mean, you've looked into?
I believe the.
I don't know exactly what it says, but it's, I think it's on the order of access to the tower for the town's use, um, for the town's representative or.
Town's designate?
But they're not really the town's designate.
I know, so. I would look, I guess I would question and look into what that easement. You might want to approach the owner if you have to broaden the easement.
Well, when Tom and Karen, because our town attorney drafts the actual lease agreement, and it's quite a long lease agreement, I don't know it word for word, but I believe it's covered in that.
That's a lease agreement, that, yeah, that's not a lease agreement between the, between Verizon and the owner of the access.
But it's our easement, so I mean, we can get Tom to verify that.
Your easement is between you and the owner, not between.
Between you and the, the.
We can verify that language.
Okay, just, just.
No, that's.
Covering everything.
It sounds like this needs to be tabled.
I'd like to wait until we can at least notify the, the people, the residents that are right there.
Okay, wait a minute.
I would like, I hate to punt anything, I'm in agreement with Diane. Certainly the council has not even talked about this yet. We would need to actually approve it. Even if we were this night, we're still waiting on the council. Council's stalled. We can only prove this condition on council approval.
Because they're not in their final agreement yet, you mean?
Let them talk about easements. Back and maybe by next month, we'll have all the neighbors' responses and then we'll see if we can figure out any issues we have with the staff.
I mean, that makes sense.
Only because the council didn't meet.
Do your.
Right, right.
Yeah, it was originally on their agenda for last month, and then they didn't have it.
And they do, okay. So would that timing work for you? Is that a hardship for you, or can you deal with that?
It works for us, I mean, we, we start to go through all of that and then a building permit afterwards, so we're, we're not mobilizing for construction next week, so.
Just, just last question, is your generator diesel?
I'll have to check, I'm not sure, depending on each site, um, they sometimes go with propane and sometimes they go with diesel, um, just depending on if they think that there's any other existing fuel sources just so that they don't have a potential conflict. So if, if BGE's is diesel, we would probably be going with propane, or vice versa.
Is there propane on that?
I'm sorry?
Propane on that?
Uh, if there's not, I think we can do, you know, the cylindrical tank, yeah. But I can, sorry, I can check on that.
Do we have any idea what the antennas are gonna look like on the water tank? So they're adding fifteen?
Four feet tall.
Correct, so they're, they're bigger.
Are they gonna be?
There was a profile on there.
Right, so.
Yeah, but those don't really show me what they look like.
Basically, if you envision it, it's almost like this cylindrical ring will be placed on the top of the tank, not on the very pinpoint top, but yeah, like a band around it, and the antennas will have three sectors.
But the antennas?
Will be, they, they will extend above the top height of the tank, but not above the height of the BGE whip antennas that are up there.
And they're just straight antennas?
They, they are panel antennas, so they would typically be about 12 inches wide and four feet tall. They typically, Verizon's, uh, typical layout is to alternate eight foot and four foot. So you'd have three eight-foot antennas per sector normally, and then two four-foot antennas.
So they will not be as high as the ones that are the BGE antennas?
They would not stick above that height, no, but those, uh, BGE's are, I believe, whip antennas. So they obviously have the top, they're at the very top, and we have to maintain a certain amount of vertical and horizontal distance from their antennas to not interfere with them.
Yeah, so we're making a crown, do you want to make it decorative?
Well, I think with that, we better do this in a separate child.
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Clearly. So you have erected the same type of antenna structure elsewhere?
Yeah, we've done, um, numerous water tank installations, yes.
All right, so at the discussion with the council, could there be a, you know, a picture, a visual of, of another site so that they live with it?
Yeah, if you have a couple of examples, sure, I can.
And can that be in the note to the homeowner?
Right. So what's, what's the chance that this can be on the, um, on the next council agenda?
I don't see any reason why it couldn't.
Next council or the next commission?
Well, we need to wait for.
Well, council, I think it's already on their agenda.
It's on their agenda, is it on the fourth, okay.
Yeah, that, it's on the, um, it's already for the lease agreement, and.
All right.
Barney, you can just.
Well, then it sounds like we're leaning toward a motion to table it until council has reviewed. So would you like to make that motion?
Quick question, with regard to the pictures of the water tank, would it be preferable for us to generate a photo simulation of what it would look like on this tower? Because we, you know, we do that in many instances where we can, you know, take pictures of that.
It'd be ideal.
We have a, um, camera, what is its technical name, is a renderer who can Photoshop the, um, scale of the antennas.
Perfect.
All right.
Please.
Excellent, excellent.
Do we need to make a motion to table it?
Do we need to? Let's do.
I'll make a motion that we table the site plan, Verizon telecommunications additions. Until next month's meeting, um, waiting on council approval. For the plan. With the expectation that Verizon will come back to this table with information on decibel noise and respond, and you have responses from neighbors, and all the neighbors in this area.
Okay, good.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to, to table the request. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, like sign, and it's unanimous. All right, very good. Thank you, sir, for coming and being here tonight. And under the assumption that council will be able to speak to it on Monday night, then we'll put out a request and notification to homeowners.
Yeah.
Can be aware, good.
Sure.
All right, excellent.
And just to clarify, if this were in, you know, a more industrial area or something else, I wouldn't have the concerns. It's because it backs up to residential homes, I just want to look out for a home.
Well, it's, yeah, that's prudent, that's prudent, I think. Okay. Do we have county planners here tonight?
Andrea.
We have Andrea, we have Carroll County Representative.
Hello.
Andrea, if you'd like to lighten yours?
Yes. Okay, hi, um, very, very quick update on my part. I just wanted to kind of, I was gonna say this anyway, but in the way that, um, Councilman, Councilman Average was saying, the water and sewer master plan is still with the state. We sent them a draft asking them to just take a look, making sure that we were on the same page regarding their comments that they sent back to us. But in the ways of Mount Airy, um, when I met with staff, we took pretty much the exact same path that he was talking about. Excuse me. The state told us that we had to look at our service areas in ten-year increments, and I believe that I said this a while ago. So we had to look at what properties did we think would develop within ten years. Anything that we did not, we had to put into a plus-ten category. So, um, any properties that staff thought we, we took an objective eye, we had to either decide ten years or priority, because there were a lot of properties that Mount Airy had in, in the priority, and that is, um, six to ten years. So we thought, um, since the master plans. So we thought, since the master plans suggested a lot of economic development and things like that, with the redevelopment of Lake Center Street and downtown and things like that, why not keep the priority, the priority properties as being economic development-driven? And that way, anything else would be in the plus-ten. So I had met with Heather, I had met with Monica and Barney, and it's pretty much exactly what Councilman Average had said. I had worked with Barney in the ways of figuring out the numbers. And so we're pretty much right in sync with what you guys had, or what he was talking about as well. The town has given the authority with the new way that we did the plan, is that if a property owner does come before you and say, or if, I'm sorry, let's just say more water does become available in the future, you do have then the authority to change property designations or categories and add more property into a future category per se, or, or an existing category. You can do that. We do amendments two times a year with Water and Sewer, so you can do that. I just wanted to say, we're, we're on the same path. We sent that to the state as kind of matching. So I, I thought it was interesting that he said that, because I was gonna say that, too. And it will make more sense, hopefully, if the state comes back and says, yes, we're totally on board, and then I'll be able to give you a draft to look at, too. With that, I'm working on a whole bunch of other stuff, but if anybody has any questions about anything else that's going on in the county, just let me know, and I can answer it for you.
Andrea, your comment about if future water capacity did become available, we would have the ability to go back and modify classifications or allocations or whatever. Were you talking about within our town boundary, or are you talking about in the county?
Within your service, service area.
Our service area.
Now, granted, Mount Airy is one of the towns that you really don't serve anybody outside of the service area. It might be like a property, maybe one, you know, that is not in your town limits, but rarely. So I mean, it is within the town. So, I mean, yeah, you are, that's what it mainly is. But yeah, you, you have that, and Heather would submit a letter that says that we want to change, you know, a property from this designation to this designation, and we would go before it. It would be as if you were doing like a rezoning or something like that. We would go through the process at the county, and we do amendment cycles two times a year, so.
Andrea, can you explain, after the, can you explain why the, the draft was sent to the MDE prior to going to all the towns' commissions?
Yes. MDE had, Maryland Department of the Environment had, we had, all of, a lot of our towns had deficits. And it used to be the, the old way of thinking was, when the development would happen, we would find the water. There would be, there would be a project that would happen, and a lot of times, I know it's funny, but in a lot of times, it would be that, it would be a developer-driven project. Like, there would be a well drilled on, I can, there were some, some areas that, when a develop, when a development happens, there's a well drilled on the property. That well is then connected to the system, and that's how, you know, capacity is then added to the, you know, to that whole overall system. But MDE then decided they wanted a lot more specifics. They wanted to know when properties were going to be developed, how you were going to serve, you know, when you were gonna serve it, how you were gonna serve it, all types of new information that they had never required us to provide before. So instead of coming before you and becoming, going before our planning commission, going before our Board of Commissioners, which we had previously done already, we then said, please look over this, see if we're going on the right path that you wanted us to go on, and figuring, we worked with staff, I worked with staff from all of the municipalities, figuring that they represent a lot of your best interests, and therefore, when we come before you, you know, it, all of our decisions can definitely be discussed as to why our thought, what our thought process was. But they can decide, you know, yes, you're going on the right path, and therefore, we won't hit that roadblock at the end. Instead of doing all of this, everyone being on board except them. So we thought we would do it this way instead, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Fingers crossed. I'm, I'm very hopeful. But if anybody has any other questions, I know the land suitability study is going before the Board of Commissioners on their Tuesday, Thursday? I mean, it's this week, that's how I get, it's on Thursday, I believe, so.
Andrea, just out of curiosity, and I'm not sure how long you've been involved with, with county planning, but have there been any other municipalities in Carroll County or, or in our region that you're familiar with that have, number one, been under a consent agreement for a period of time? And then saw fit to approach MDE with a plan, with a change, and there was modification to their baseline, or at least the consideration that MDE gave them? Is there anything there that's similar to the kind of situation that we're looking at here?
I know Tawny Town had a consent agreement. As far as the rest of the question, I can definitely look into it for you. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure the rest. I know that they, I, they might be in the same where they're either out of it or in the midst of being out of it. But I, I'm not sure entirely on specifics, so.
So it might be of value?
Does the city of Westminster as well, I thought they got into some, yeah.
They, historically, I believe. I just know the Tawny Town more recently, within the last couple of years, what might be working their way out of it.
Weren't they buying up additional land for them?
Yeah, some, I had heard, I had heard that, yes. Anything else I can answer for anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we don't have Frederick County. Did he send word at all, Heather?
No, I'm giving myself a little note to reach out to Mr. Jim.
All right, then we move into new business.
Nothing under new business.
There's not anything under, no, there really isn't anything under new business.
You can put whatever you want.
And it's not really new business, but in case you haven't met him and you don't know who he is, Jeff Tunkel, the president of BeLocal Mount Airy, is visiting with us tonight.
Are you new business, Jeff?
BeLocal's a relatively new, not so new anymore, organization that's interested in community building in Mount Airy, and I'm familiar with them because they partnered with Mount Airy Coonnes in sponsoring and conducting the comprehensive community needs assessment. Last couple of years. So Jeff, we're glad to have you with us. Anything you want to share with anybody?
If you don't know about our, our goal in the past year, it was a large survey that we did at town file with people from local businesses happening in town, and provide that feedback to everybody who's interested in it, whether it's in town, government, organizations, businesses, that is, that help with development of the town, the direction that citizens were concerned with this long day ago, support local businesses, support economic development here in the community, and support organizations to network more with one another towards a common objective. So that's kind of what we're all about. That was the goal of our survey. And we're just trying to stay engaged with what happens as a result of what we think came out of it.
Is that survey on the website?
Yes, if you, if you go to BeLocal Mount Airy, MTAI, or whatever, without worry. Click on the survey tab at the top, you'll be able to find all the results, and as well as the whole analysis and sort of.
One, one comment, although the methodology of the survey was very different than the 2007, eight town survey, there was two-thirds to three-fourths corroboration of the results that came out of the 2007, eight survey. And you had basically five themes.
Five, five major themes, yeah, that, that came out of it. We started with twenty-five focus groups. Then did some short-form surveys and an online survey. Through all that, the five top teams emerged, and that, it's a number, number one is community center. I think people most wanted to see. Pathways, walk, walk, bike, walk type community was very, very high. Supporting local businesses, more sports fields, basically all these kinds of, kind of areas, and a good green environmentally sensitive town, the top five. So those are the initiatives we, we need to say engage and interest in, and have some small working groups who are trying to see those things become a reality. So if anybody's interested in joining us and being part of those working groups, we're always looking for citizens who want to stay engaged. There was a very large interest expressed in the survey of people wanting to be engaged, and certainly, people would love to see that on the horizon.
I don't know two more people in our community that want to be more engaged than you and your wife, though. They, the parents on the, on the Carroll County side are very familiar with the Tunkels. They are very giving and generous and, and always doing things to better our community, so it's really fantastic.
But they're already, they want, they want more people.
They are. But I think that they do actually inspire. I mean, they're inspiring our children, you know, they've started the recycling program at the elementary schools and get the children involved. They, you guys do a lot for our community. Thank you.
Super. Thank you.
We did, we just had solar panels put on our house. The installation's finished about a week ago, and now we're waiting for, until they come in to the final, or next, or when it starts to turn into power.
Thanks for joining us tonight. Andrea?
You reminded me of something that I didn't say, or should have said.
Play next one.
The energy efficiency loan program, we still have funds, so please do step on your house, because you can get us fifteen thousand dollars for energy efficiency projects on your house.
Wow. Did you know about that?
I, I didn't know about the town one. I, I know on the Frederick side, they have a similar program they're doing right now. It's between two thousand and twenty-five hundred, but it's, it's done in a very special way where you have to join sort of a, a group that's going to go in bulk, purchase, if you will, from one installer and they're doing.
Well, good, maybe now you can get something back from Carroll County.
We, we did, we did ours, at least.
And I don't know about BGE, but Potomac Edison is doing low-cost, inexpensive energy audits.
Both, both of us do that. If you want to get out the basic energy audit, contact either of you, someone will come out and analyze your home and give you some suggestions.
Yep. So they're aggressively looking at, attempting to reduce usage.
Fifteen free light bulbs and, you know, water.
We, we got ours today, yeah. Yeah, very cool. Any other new business? No? So we move on to unfinished business? How shall we approach the water capacity analysis?
The one that Dick did, or the one that Chris did?
Well, because we, we have, we have a full complement of, of our members here tonight, so.
And it wasn't clear to me, was, was this Chris's? He doesn't have the name on it, so was it Chris's?
The water summary that we got?
Was that, did he do that?
I don't know. In, in my reading this right, that this is Dick's?
Barney, is the summary Chris's for the water, water summary?
Yeah, even though it's, it's set up in a different way, so it's.
Is it Chris's?
The bottom line's, because it's set for Gary's, right?
It's Gary's.
That's, that's an older one.
Well, this is an older one, okay.
Yeah, the, the one that was in our packet is a copy of Gary's original. And it has, what this has that the.
That's somebody who knew all the housing went to.
Okay.
Water treatment capacity, and it also has the requirements that we had on the books in the.
Two thousand and eleven?
Yeah.
So that was a couple of comments I had about it, because that, one, it's two thousand and eleven. I mentioned all these to Chris earlier. Two thousand and eleven requirements, two, the zoning potentially could have changed. It could have changed based on county, it could have changed on what town was doing, master plan. I also noticed that page three of five is missing out of the numbers, so I had no idea what three of five was, but.
It was a couple of years ago, so.
I, I know, but, but the fact that it went one, two, four, five, I wanted to know what three was.
That's true.
And then.
Do test, do test.
Yes, I'm a numbers person. It might have been. And then the only other thing I saw in there was the number, I don't think this accounted for potential expansion of water usage by existing people. So we had discussed prior, at least I discussed with Barney some about if we had a small amount left, that may get sucked up based on water, whatever, and it didn't factor that in. It kind of just said, here's the exit.
Actually, there are recommendations of it on the backside.
There is no backside? Is there?
Yeah.
Mine didn't have backside.
Says basically that, or doesn't seem to be any additional water.
No, I knew it said that, but the front of the sheet kind of, yeah, the front of the sheet kind of just, when I looked at cursory, it was like, oh, yeah, we still have a little bit left. I was like, well, no, maybe.
Right, no, I agree. That's why when I looked at some of the numbers when we were reading, yeah, ten thousand gallons per day is nothing, yeah.
So do you know what Chris is?
My understanding was it's not necessarily what, it's more than likely somewhere between what Dick presented and maybe a more conservative posture. We were cautious as we were talking about scenarios.
Barney, are you?
Yeah, there was a lot of.
And is Barney, are you in agreement with all these numbers that are being produced?
I've been helping to make sure the numbers are correct. I haven't, I'm not involved in making recommendations of which way to go, I guess.
So I'll re, I'll rephrase.
I mean, I personally value your input, you know, so I would hope that you are being involved in adding your two cents.
We asked for me to give us.
Yeah, I mean, it's ultimately, I kind of look to you as the expert.
It'd be useful to know.
Well, you told us what you thought at our last workshop.
Yeah.
And we incorporated your recommendations in our position.
Yeah, I think the two thousand and four number that we currently use is, is conservative, and we're taking the very worst case scenario, and we're adding drop conditions to it, and saying that that's our limit. I, I do believe there's some room for, you know, you know, allowing a little bit more, maybe, but if you go with the two thousand and eight number by itself, which I know has been thrown out there, you're basically saying we didn't need well that, which is kind of a hard statement to make to me. You're, you're adding, you're taking ten percent and throwing it out there that, you know, people can use. It's a big step, and you can't step back. You can always take a smaller step and step again, but you can't.
Well, the, and the other, the other point that, perspective that came out of our, our discussion at the last work session was that there are a number of factors that could very well be involved in this and influencing the, the reduction in the usage trend that we've seen. It could be a function of the rainfall patterns we've had. It could potentially be a function in part of, of the rates, of, of higher rates being charged, okay?
The economy.
It could be in part the economy. Those are three potentially different factors. And so one of our thoughts was perhaps we should get a few more data points in this trend before, you know, and, and take another look at it.
That's something that Councilman Average has tasked Barney and I with, and Barney and I will be meeting tomorrow, since we weren't able to today, to review some of that and provide additional data for the town council meeting.
Good.
Well, and not to discount anything that the Water Commission is doing, I mean, I know that they're working very hard, but anyway, I want to know that Barney's on board with whatever's presented. Job, this is, you know, I, I feel his knowledge is, absolutely. I mean, he's, his knowledge is invaluable. I wouldn't want to move forward with, based on numbers or any information that he is in disagreement with, to be honest.
And we're both tasked with the responsibility of effectively representing the town's APFO, too.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thanks, Barney. All right.
Is there anything specific, Heather, that you were looking for from us tonight regarding this issue?
Um, I, there was, the response and recommendation was on there, because it's our last work session. I think there was a thought that the planning commission was gonna. I think there was a thought that the planning commission was going to forward a recommendation to the town council. It, it seemed that things were on a bit of a fast track, but I, I don't think so anymore.
Okay.
It, things change, yeah, so I, I think it's slow and.
Well, I think the feedback that we received tonight.
Right.
In part, you know, showed that, you know, there's every desire to be prudent in that discussion.
Right.
I think there was also recognition that there is a growing awareness of it's a precious resource and we may be talking about it in extended period of time with existing capacity, the existing allocation, right? So whatever that usage baseline turns out to be, we're going to be tasked with the most responsible allocation of it. And that's caused us to say, then we, we need to look at that, we may need to request more latitude in terms of how that's allocated. We have that, that freedom with regard to new water, we don't have it currently in the code. We don't have it in the code currently.
But we haven't, we haven't done our regulations for new water sources either, so right now we have the right to do that, but we haven't done it. We don't have the right to do it yet for current water, which is, I did a really basic draft of just very general language that I'll send out to everybody, but.
Okay.
Because, and we should, I mean, and it's different, the, the, the new, the new water that says we have to draft regs and it gives a list of about nine or ten factors, those aren't the same factors we want for, for the current water. Because they really don't, they really don't give us the prioritization that we want, that we're really looking for.
Well, and if we're going to prioritize anything, size.
Incentivize.
Well, I mean, if we're looking, you know, if it's important to the town to be redeveloping, say, Center Street or the downtown area, you know, for new people coming to the town who want to have a business here, is there something? And I'm just throwing this out there, maybe at, you know, have some sort of an incentive for them to look more closely at the areas that we feel are important to develop, rather than somewhere new, somewhere further out, somewhere over, you know? We have what we want, we've, you know, the town has responded as to what they want, more infill, things like that, rather than new development, maybe there's a way to attract people to the areas that we feel are the most important to develop first.
There, there, that's scary that you say that because.
Are we on this, are we telepathic today?
Melissa and I met with John Wheatman of Carroll County Economic Development, and one of the things that we spoke about is how to market our downtown, how to, you know, explaining that we're going through a master plan process, and how do you allow that competitive edge? We can't really control the, you know, the ground rent or the square footage rents, but what can we do? And one of the things, and I'm, I'm not saying that this is what we're going to do.
Right.
But some things that we can explore are, you know, tax credits, which aren't always the best option. There could be different fee structures, there could be delayed restructuring of fees. Councilman Strong has talked about that in the Economic Development Commission, and that's actually a component that I think we should touch, touch on in the master plan. When we delineate these key, key areas for development, really think about, I'm not trying to expand what we're doing with the master plan, but that.
No, but there's, I mean, as we've been going through the master plan thing and we've talked, you know, multiple times, you know, when Mr. Scranton proposed the, his rail yard project and things like that, how that would, you know, that has a domino effect on a lot of other businesses within town, you know, the cold storage area, things like that, things that can, that are a priority of the town, that can help sustain other businesses within the town, that help, you know, it's not just an individual project that by itself you hope fails or wins, you know, or whatever, but also can have a greater impact on the future of, of the whole. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So I guess my first question would be there, before we incentivize, what we want to give to people who are already like the rail yard and the stuff that has been waiting.
Well, and that can be part of the, you know, what we say is, you know, if we just, if it's decided, and again, I'm just throwing out an idea, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do anything, I'm just kind of throwing out what's been on my mind, but yes, if we say downtown, so to speak, is our priority, then yes, you know, rail yard, of course, cold storage and expanding to Center Street, you know, would that be our top priority as opposed to things further out? I don't know.
We've, we've reached it.
And the consequences of that become your rails to trails project and I guess intended consequences, not unintended consequences, because they, they fall right in line with that.
That's a good point.
It's all complimentary. We've reached out to other commissions to say, you know, please take a look at what we drafted already, give us some feedback, also give us some thoughts in terms of, of your particular focus. And it doesn't have to slow down the master plan development process, there could be a section of the plan almost like an appendix where some of this feedback and, and some recommendations and thinking from the other commissions could be gathered as a starting point to pull together. Andrea. She thought of something else.
Okay, but it has very much to do with what you're talking about. Just how Heather had said that, I'm talking about ways to encourage people to come downtown and things like that. I just wanted to let you know that there is a possibility that Mount Airy might be putting in for a grant for a rail car to be brought downtown, and so I'm sure that everyone, well, I don't know if everyone knows, but I'm just, I am the contact.
The idea's been thrown out there for years.
Well, I am the contact for, I'm the contact for Carroll County, but let me explain what the grant is. The grant is from the Civil War, the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, and the way that the grant is operated is that, talking about the importance of the railroad during the Civil War. So that's how we're kind, I had told, it was Melissa, right? Told Melissa that we should structure it, kind of like having, if we're going to use a rail car as a public restroom downtown, that we would put, that is what was. That was the.
It's just an idea.
That was the, I am telling you how it was called to me, that it would be used as a, because.
Can we explore other options?
I'm telling you what it was called. No, it was, um.
It was, it's just one perhaps, it's just, it's not the final plan.
Well, regardless of how the rail car, it's, they were talking about, there are a lot of people who come downtown and that there isn't a place to go to the bathroom downtown, like they come to town hall, but a lot of times if they're coming after hours, town hall is closed and then they have to go, and maybe the restaurants don't want someone, you know, coming in who might not be a patron and something like that. So this would be a place where people could use a public restroom and then also could come and convene and see the history of also the town of Mount Airy. Hey.
But now, um.
But you never know, this was.
The details are being worked out, so don't, you know, that.
No, no, this was just.
A lot of final.
No, it could be whatever the town wanted it to be, regardless of whatever the town wanted it to be, it could be a meeting room, I don't know, whatever it is.
A by-purpose room.
Yeah, whatever meeting room space that the town is, I just wanted to emphasize the point of the meeting room was the fact that it had to be some sort of a connection to the railroad during the Civil War.
And we are going to do that, and we're very, very thankful that Andrea gets to help us through that process.
Wonderful.
So we are blessed.
That's exciting.
I am the contact person.
Yes, you are, we're so happy about that.
Well, I don't know who's, who's been to Ohio Pile, but they have, their, their visitor center is their old train station, and they're on the Cumberland, they're, they're huge rails to trails, but also they have a river, I mean, they have a lot of other cool stuff. But this, you know, after going there a couple of years ago, it's like, this could be a little miniature, you know, we have our rails to trails, we have our visitor center and.
Well, I thought it'd be cool to have like all the brochures of everything that was going on in the town, you know what I mean? And you can also talk with, you know, Frederick and get some of their brochures because they have a lot of, I, I was just thinking from the Civil War aspect that they, um.
Yeah, you can do the whole rail.
Yeah, all the different battlefields and everything like that. And I was, I did tell Melissa, the more that you can incorporate into the importance of, you know, the Civil War, the better. So it was like, you know, what was, what was Mount Airy doing, you know, what was happening in Mount Airy, so that kind of thing.
I want the brochures to go into, into the walls of the bathroom.
And it's the hundred and fiftieth year.
Well, you need reading material.
Only in the men's room.
It's just one of those things, I'm sorry to say about the bathroom, that's just what somebody called and told me about.
We're just having fun, Heather's suspense.
Headline tomorrow, bathroom, bathroom in Mount Airy.
You should reach out to the Historical Society because they actually had a meeting one time about the, Mount Airy and the Civil War, so reach out to the President of the Historical Society.
The Carroll County's?
No, here, in town, the town.
Well, Heather.
Well, that's, that's actually what they have to do.
Whether you reach out to Iowa president or whoever, if it's, well, BJ is like secretary, I think, but it's.
Mike Eko?
Yeah, they had a meeting where he talked about Mount Airy and in the Civil War and its, and its position in it.
All right, I would tell.
Here we go.
Because what they said was like, to use, like, to have a placard up and talk about, you know, what happened, they said it would be something that was really cool, so.
At, at one time, Mamsa was also involved in, actually it was when I first got into office, there was a lot to talk about, breaking a rail car and there was also talks about having, leaning back towards the cold, cold storage look-alike type of things with vendors in it. But I think the important thing, having heard from several people today about potential public use things, that one of the things that we want to make sure that when we're tasked with prioritization, that we do have a certain reserve for some things like the community center.
Absolutely.
A restroom facility downtown, which has been out there for quite a while now.
Yeah, I think this, I was the, I guess, assistant mainstream manager for Mount Airy a hundred years ago, I don't know really how long ago it was, but I think that this was something that was on the table then.
Yeah.
So I was like, oh wow, this is, this is still talking, so I, I like this, but I think it's an interesting project, but it is pretty cool. So I just wanted to bring that out, that, but remember, Heather, January thirty-first, intent to apply.
We're, we're intending and Melissa's working on that.
Okay, because I told her that I would be here.
Is January thirty-first the deadline?
The intent to apply is a really simple form and it's just kind of like a very.
Isn't that this week?
Yeah, that's Thursday.
She's been working on it, this, we've been working on it for a while.
It's a, it's a form that really is just, we plan on doing something. And because anyone who doesn't do this, like, doesn't even turn in a form, cannot apply for the grant, so I've been telling everybody, please, just remember, if you plan on doing anything, send this in to me.
Great.
But doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a bathroom.
It's the final word on that one, okay?
No, it doesn't have to be a bathroom.
Okay, all right.
Mount Airy has its sustainable community designation, now that helps.
Yeah, it can be compostable toilet, we can have.
Let's move on.
Okay, given that, come Monday night, council is going to hear a recommendation for water baseline, usage baseline.
That is what I've been told by.
Okay, and so there may or may not be a decision, I suspect there probably will be as opposed to tabling it, I don't know. No idea.
I don't think that's what he just said, and that's why I was very careful when I was asking press questions.
I think what he's saying is he would prefer no decision as opposed to decision.
Okay.
He doesn't want us to jump the gun.
Right, because it's important, too important.
And that's also the guidance the town attorney is giving all of us. Okay.
Yeah, and the, the real value, I, I think for all of us is that it increases public awareness and council awareness of the situation so that they're sensitive to some of the things that we need to do.
Okay, well, the reason I went there was to get us to, to think, okay, so what can we line up in terms of progress and work sequence on the master plan, given our desire to continue to progress?
Well, let's talk, so that kind of, so you're at the next one, discuss the action plan for the master plan?
Yeah.
Because I actually wanted to address that, go ahead Heather.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm going back to the water capacity analysis for the response and recommendation. What I got from Councilman Everett is that he was supporting not moving forward because, to allow the commission the allocations. As far as, I think this needs to be a priority somehow.
In terms of our, our recommendation on tweaking.
To allocate.
Okay, all right.
Our recommendation on coming up with a new, new code, new code text, text for the code for allocating existing resources.
Allocation of resources.
Yeah.
So.
That should be our next work session.
And does he want this before, he doesn't want this before next?
No, I don't think he does what I'm saying now.
He doesn't want this by, by next Monday.
No, no, I think, I think that this should be February's focus.
All right, so this in part is what Les is taking a swing at.
There's going to be immediate action anyway because we still are under the consent agreement, so.
Right.
And we are not, we're not out from under it.
No, that's for.
Not to mention, I mean, this body. Working this, so there's other things you guys are working on.
Right.
Document, you have other things.
Well, we have a sense now that we need this, that we will.
Right, so that, but before we moved on to the master plan, I just wanted to.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Agreed. So I just wanted to see how everybody else felt about our process so far for working on the master plan, because I'm, I'm a little frustrated, I feel like, I mean, we've had a lot of work sessions, as we all know, and I don't feel like we've gotten very far. And to nobody's fault, I think we're trying to be thorough, I think we're trying to be, you know, thoughtful about the process, but I feel like there's got to be a better way that we can get this done without it taking ten more years. And I feel like if we keep going with the way we're going and our, you know, work sessions, you know, every couple of weeks, even though that sounds like it should work, I feel like it's not. I would, before we started this process, what I had understood, you know, with Monica, with a discussion with Monica over a year ago, was that typically the town staff would kind of work it first and then give that to us to go over and then discuss. And I think that that might need to be considered.
We were doing that.
Well, but we're kind of doing it, yes, but we're kind of doing it paragraph by paragraph and then being, you know, picking it apart word by word, and that takes, I mean, I think we're taking a painful amount of time, whereas some of this, I think, I think this, you know, that we could get a larger bulk from town staff and then go over it ourselves on our own time, without it being, you know, word by word here in a planning session, and just pull out, you know, the important parts.
But before we started doing it word by word, we were all, we were submitting different copies, different versions, and then we were trying to put those together, and then, and then from that it turned into like word by word, because that wasn't, that wasn't.
Well, and you're right.
And Scott helped us merge them.
The town staff said they wanted guidance, you know, they didn't want to go further because they needed guidance for us because they're going to go down a trail that, if we go, oh, by the way, you wasted your time.
Well, true, and I don't want staff to waste their time doing all that and then have us change everything either, I just feel like that we've got to be able to come up with a more productive way to do this. I, I just feel like we're moving so slowly, and it, again, we're, I know we're trying to move forward, I, I'm not saying that we're doing something wrong, but I just don't feel with all the planning, all the work sessions we've had, I just don't feel like we've made much progress, and if we go at this pace, it's going to take us.
But keep in mind, that all the recent work sessions have not been about the master plan at all, they've been, they've been water, I mean, since she's been here.
Right.
Have we looked at the master plan?
We haven't had one in the last three years.
That's what she, right. But there's always going to be, obviously, there's always going to be other issues that we're feeling like we need a little extra work on, those aren't going to stop.
No, no, but the water was because we couldn't work on the master plan until we resolved the water issue.
Yeah, this, the, the heart, the heart of this master plan is the W R E, the M G E, and I suspect streets and roads and transportation will be a very significant piece, okay? Those elements right there, and I think it wasn't until we waded into it to saw how significant it was and the capacity issues, that we realized we actually have to go back and tweak some of what had been drafted.
I, I have a suggestion, because I don't think we're anywhere near as far off.
I don't either.
Getting this done as, as it might appear. We already did the executive summary, chapters one, two, three, I think, was, you know, kind of wishy, but what was slowing us was, was chapter four. Was chapter four. We already did the executive summary, chapters one, two, three, I think, um, is, you know, kinda wishy, but what was slowing us was, was chapter four. And I think that we are at a stage right now where we can agree on a general approach and it would entail a work session and from that certainly we can have somebody, whether it's staff or one of us, to create from that guidance at a work session, uh, that chapter. Which includes all of the zoning recommendations and, um, the stuff that's already in large part in the municipal growth element, which is very near done. So we're not far off.
What about then?
Instead of these little couple hours work sessions in the evening when I'm pretty tired and just to go home, would anybody be open to?
Who, I don't know how the staff, cause I hate to have them come in on a weekend or something, but taking a Saturday or something and submitting a workday's worth of hours. You know, I don't care if we were to pizza or whatever to eat in between, but just, I feel like we need a bulk of time to just kick forward.
I understand your frustration too, Diane, cause I feel like, oh my god, if I have another work session, I'm gonna slit my wrist and.
Don't forget presses here, be careful.
Yeah, well, I'll do it anyway.
But it just.
I totally get where you're coming from.
You know, for those of us who, who were on the commission before, we started having work sessions and just met once a month, we very much enjoyed our, our time.
And now it's like.
But it's, it just, it is, it's, it's, we were, we thought this was gonna be six months' worth of work sessions of extra, and it's, it's just becoming the norm.
It's more significant than that.
And I think that it's a lot to ask of, of everybody, including town staff. So I'd like to find some solution that can help us move forward.
Well, back to my suggestion, what I will offer is that if we can have a meeting of the minds at our, at a work session on the direction that we ought to go in zoning recommendations based on what we found out about the water situation and the extent. I mean, I'd be happy to take that and take a load off the staff, I would draft something from a starting point, um, that we could all take a look at.
I'd have to bring up, you have to, what's your opinion? Yeah, I would, I, I need the zoning recommendations, but I, um, I really think that's something that staff, you know, perhaps with Gary's guidance, you know, or, or input. I think that's something that staff really needs to take one and take ownership of.
I agree.
Yeah, I could provide the input to you, but.
Right, the, the only thing, and I, I think we've had, um, because we have spent so much time together, we, we do have a fairly good understanding of where the planning commission wants to go. Um, the decisions on the individual zoning requests themselves have yet to be made and that's something that.
I think we can do that sooner rather than later.
Right, right, um.
Believe me, Diane, nobody is more anxious to get this done than I am, I've been pushing this for a long time.
I agree, I know. I, I mean, not pushing for, I mean, I.
I agree, I think that needs to just be down, I think that's one of the other part of it.
So, I mean, if you wanna have a work session and, and hammer out the, the commission's decision, there's already been some consensus on the rezonings. I can pull together the chapter with the information that we already know and you guys can talk about it at that point, so we're not wasting a work session just to, for me to fill in those blanks. I think that might be the better way to go, for, for me to compile all the information, all the discussion, um, on that chapter. And then whatever information is missing, I can drawl out, you guys can review the chapter. And it's better to have something that you disagree with than nothing to agree or disagree with.
I think at this point too, I, I do think at this point, you know, when we first started this, Heather was just getting into this role, um, you know, we had been dealing with Kelly in the past. I think that now we all kinda know we're on the same page, I trust that Heather is fully aware of, of the direction that we've all kind of expressed and where we're going. I think that we're in a better place to let staff do a little bit more.
I agree.
So.
We've, we've already had.
That's not putting any pressure on or anything.
We've, we've had two hearings already, a year apart, on the zoning requests. So, I mean, I think we're at a point where we can draft up something for us to discuss at work session and.
I just wanna stop having this every other week, work session.
No, Gary, I just think it's too much to keep having these, you know, three, four meetings a month is, is just too much.
I'm, I'm trying to find a solution to moving forward without it being a weekly meeting.
That's right.
Well, chapter four, I think, is certainly the hardest hurdle that we've had and it's been sitting in front of us for several months now, so. Yeah, we need to do the legislation, but after that, I, I don't see any reason why we can't go back in and try and tackle, uh, chapter four. And I think if we can just come out with a consensus on the guidance for it, the, boy, it's ready to shoot back to staff. And, you know, like I said, I'd be happy to offer my, offer my services helping to draft it as I did on some of the other ones. And we should be able to move again.
I think the other real.
We can't say that we can't address the issue anymore.
Yeah, the, the other realization that we need to acknowledge is that, um, if you waited to try to get it all right and it is perfect as possible, we'd never accomplish it. Okay, it's, it's gonna be a work in progress, it's gonna be dynamic. We know so much more now than we did just even a few weeks ago. I think we give it our best shot, we rely even more on town staff and we make it a dynamic document. And we also make it a relate, a working relationship with the other commissions, everyone's involved in this thing going forward, because that's what it's gonna be.
Well, don't forget the other commissions are, anybody and everybody, we want residents, other commissions, whatever, can always come to our work sessions too.
Well.
I don't want that slowing the process.
Well, it's not gonna slow it down, but you're gonna get it.
If a caller shows up.
Okay, you'll see it, you'll see it.
Well, and the other benefit to staff, um, as well is, I mean, I attend parks and recs, I attend, um, EDC and, and those are, you know, and recycling and sanitation, I've.
Don't leave them out.
See, I know that's the real problem with recycling.
Exactly.
Well, you're holding things up for us, bud.
You've reached the longer than there, so.
Streets and roads, um, is going to be, um, the, the transportation network, um, got the plans, I haven't looked at them, but thank you, Andrew, for coordinating this. The, the road networks for the transportation, um, chapter, um, streets and roads is going to look at, so that'll be a lot of help. So I would suggest allow, you know, staff, whether it be Barney, myself, um, be the liaison to the commissions and, and bring back to this body. So, so much isn't on you, I mean, it, this water allocation deal is going to be huge for you guys. So just, you know, right, wrong or indifferent, let us get, give you a document that you can accept or reject.
Cool.
I, I think that we, I have a good idea and if not, then.
It's, it's also important to understand that, um, we can always modify what we come up with. It's not that big of a deal to change a master plan should something.
Well, it actually happened nineteen seventy with the very first one they did, shortly, shortly thereafter, yes.
A year, yeah. Yeah.
But we're way over there.
Lady told me to stop shooting for perfection.
Yeah.
And, you know, put something out there.
Okay.
It may not be perfect, but it'll be a blank.
Let a whole bunch of people take shots, but get something out there.
All right, we got a, a fresh direction. All right, let's see, Heather, do you have an update on O P draft zoning?
Um, I, I have an update, I still don't have an update. Frank, um, or I shouldn't say this, but at the, um, we're going back from the O P E deciding, you know. Oh, I'm talking, just wait a minute.
Make sure you get your mic.
Put your hand up, you hit a wall, snap it now. Now I have one thought and it was, okay, so the O P E, um, we are not, we have, we've bounced around the idea of a consultant, um, looking at it. This commission has looked at this ordinance for a very long time. Um, I am sitting down with a member of the I D A. I'm going to represent what I feel the planning commission, based on their discussions, um, will allow is, is, would be moderately comfortable with, with the idea of the I D A will do the same. We will highlight any deal breakers, you know, any, anything that we think we cannot negotiate on. Um, it'll come back to this body for acceptance, rejection. Where, what we're trying to get is that the planning commission and, and the developer of that property can live with something. And that, that's what we're trying to do without putting the burden of continued discussion on you. Again, maybe easier to reject than go through everything. So, um, I'll be meeting with them this Thursday and, um, look to have something back to in February.
Can, can we just stress that office, business, nothing that's retail, commercial or restaurant?
I gotcha.
I mean, I, I think my main commerc, my main concern is not pulling away from the business that we wanna pull down.
Right.
But there was also something, I haven't looked at it in a while, but I remember you and I were, noticed the same thing. It allowed for, it was either a hospital or a hotel.
Hotel and conference center, which can't survive without a restaurant, that wouldn't work.
Yeah, and we don't want hotel and conference.
Okay, now hotel conference center, if it had a, a, um, restaurant ins, and I'm not saying I'm lobbying for it, I'm just clarifying. If, if it had, if it was an inclusive, like.
I'm not opposed to because of the restaurant, I just think it's too big, I mean, we were talking office park.
Okay, okay, okay.
Let's, let, let's all do the what is, you guys, you guys had your practical discussion, come back.
Um, this is zoning, this is zoning, this is the, the, you know, what the land is gonna be utilized for, you're, um.
Okay, go ahead and finish your thought.
Find me a way across twenty seven and we'll think about it, um.
I'm a taxi.
No, I mean, a hotel and conference center, first of all, the footprint would be huge.
Okay.
Um, it would have to include a restaurant, which I think would be detrimental, but I don't, I just don't think it fits with.
Okay, consensus.
I agree with you.
Heather, have your meeting come back.
Well, but, no, I mean, this is important discussion, this is important.
I wish we had some bed and breakfast or something, people's day.
Okay, so a huge hotel that.
It's a business and office park.
You understand that Harrison Lysheer is our best source for water for what we consider some of the essential types of thing.
Harrison Lysheer is not gonna fix our problem and, and the footprint of this plan is huge.
No, it's not gonna fix it, but the type of flexibility that we would have would come in the reasonable mid-range from Harrison Lysheer as the best option, uh, right now. And if you soak it, uh, all it up, all of it up on a hotel, which would be a large water user.
I would rewind, yeah, why would you want to?
It'd be more than what they're asking for.
I mean, what's the sense in doing it anymore?
Okay, so hotel conference center, um.
Well, it's certainly not the priority of an office park.
Okay, um, standalone restaurants.
I mean, if what, if what Diane's talking about, economic development, we want that downtown, that's obviously an issue, we don't want, and we don't want chains, right?
Right, and we also talked about the fact that we don't want that to be something that's open late at night.
We discussed restaurants that would serve the offices there.
Yeah, a small cafe or whatever, so they can grab their lunch is one thing, but something that's a closed.
Let them have their discussion, let them have their discussion and come back, it's gonna be.
But she needs to know.
I need to know some points that.
That are definite.
Yeah, these are fuel breakers.
I don't, I don't have a problem with restaurants, I have no problems with restaurants.
Okay.
Chains or any restaurants?
Yes, as long as you don't try to micromanage upfront.
I do.
I do, I do.
Lindy does.
Do you obviously some Italian restaurants?
Yeah, we need some Italian restaurants in town.
It's eight thirty, you need to pay. Um, okay. All right, so, well, that's only two things.
Can I just say, when we talked about this, you know Heather?
I'm sorry.
Do you remember that Monica, when we were concerned about this, said you can create a whole, I don't know what she called.
Master plan, basically.
Like you can create the plan that you want to be developed.
Right.
Yeah, it can be master planned, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say based on the survey, what farries the town would need for that area would be, for the recreation field, right, preserve some of that property for that purpose. Okay, so the community center.
That's all being negotiated as part of it.
They, ideally, yeah, they, they most like, they would most likely to see it downtown. A lot, a lot, there, there's a group that's looked at a lot of the options within downtown and not finding very good ones, so if that does not come to pass, that would be the next best place.
You bet the builders can.
I mean.
And what else?
Um, oh, and then live with regards to, you know, restaurants, whatever, yeah. People definitely did wanna see local businesses supported, so that would be steer away from chains for all possible.
We got that from the town survey as well.
Yeah, I mean, reaffirm, same thing.
Absolutely.
Well, there's already supposed to be sports fields there, it's just that there's also gonna be an office park or businesses and so what we're trying to do is limit and not have big hotels, conference rooms.
Yeah, one of the actual ideas for the community center space that's being developed is to have rooms, facilities within there that businesses could rent for those types of purposes. You know, meeting room sized places for, you know, small conferences, not huge conventions or anything like that, but various nice areas that they could come in if they didn't have their own larger office space, maybe catered by local businesses to come into the community center.
Right, I mean, there could, but, I mean, I would have no prob, you know, if one of, cause there's going to be multiple buildings, not just one huge building, if one building wanted to reserve a floor for people to.
Like a convention floor or.
A conference room, so to speak, where they would then hire maybe a caterer for their event.
Convention, a convention. Like a car show or something.
You know, they could call Lindy to cater them for the event. But something like that, I mean, if for a meeting space, that would go along with an office area. But to be advertised as a, you know, a convention center type.
Convention.
So are we competing with the bar company here?
No.
Huh?
No comment. No, you're not.
No.
I don't think so. Okay, any other input for Heather?
Well, I just have one more thing, but, but no, that, that's a good thought, but the, the thing is to get an ordinance done and out there so our public and our businesses and our town stakeholders can come and comment about it.
Right, right.
Because someone wise once, once said that we're, we're not gonna get it perfect, we need the, everyone else's input, so we need to get. It must be, um, so let's, let's get what we can, can live with, let's get the public comment and then we can finalize something. Because if we get it completely perfect with everybody, we're gonna hear from the public and we're gonna have to change it, so we're.
Yeah, we just need a draft, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Something tangible, true. All right. Reports? Do we have a zoning administrative report?
Not much to it this month. Winter.
All right.
Meeting date is the twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth?
When you guys want, do you wanna have a work session for the, the language?
Not really.
Okay, I think Valentine's Day.
Do we have to bring you a box of chocolates?
Yeah.
Anything with Valentine's Day.
Okay, we'll have Valentine's Day. Do we, do you want me to send out?
Some possible dates.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see us task ourselves to have no more than one.
Okay.
And to make full use of it.
All right.
So you specify all that we could accomplish and that's what we'll task ourselves to do and then let's all try to see when that could be.
And if the commission does wanna do a Saturday work session, I am not available according to Jennifer.
Okay. I just was throwing an option out there, that's mine, I mean, I work weekends, but I'm willing to try and, we'll think of other options, that's all.
We can, we can go to work with you. No, I am flexing to whatever the commission wants. We can go to work with you. No, I am flexing to whatever the commission wants to do. Well, you can fly us somewhere.
There we go.
Great, let's have a meeting on Tony's plane.
We'll do it.
Yeah, we can on Tony's plane.
That's right.
I'll, I'll.
Hotel Southwest.
Go serve you peanuts now again, so I'll go.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We're getting late, Gary.